Good evening, welcome to the August Board of Education Meeting for Lake Mills. I'm Rick Mason, President of the Board, and our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Do we have a verification of the meeting notice?
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader and posted at the Lake Mills Library, Post Office, and Big Lake Mills on August 3rd. It was also posted on the district website.
Could we rise and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call the meeting to order, could we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney here, Rachel Davies.
Here.
Robert D'Imperio.
Here.
David Radel.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here. Any agenda revisions? Seeing none, could we have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second?
Moving to second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Any community input?
I do not have any this evening.
Seeing none, we will go to board reports, Mr. D'Imperio, Facilities Committee.
On August 1st, the Facilities Committee met. We had members of the administration, as well as our consulting firms, Myron Construction and EUA Architects, and the primary purpose of that meeting was to review what may be the second question for the referendum, which is the outdoor complex. When we met previously, the Facilities Committee met as a committee of the whole of the Board, we had set a goal of trying to reduce the cost of that particular component. I think it's important to note that that facility will solve a number of issues that we have, some of the safety concerns, the condition of campus field, the need to resurface and possibly expand the track, an opportunity to provide an area where summer sports can participate, both, for example, our soccer, as well as practice for the other spring When we looked at the survey, there was support for that, although we had a feeling that possibly if we could find a way to reduce the cost, that that support may increase. So as we also learned in the interim, since we met together as a larger group, that the 3.25 budget did not include the parking, that had already been eliminated. So we set to work and we were able to reduce that budget by approximately $375,000. And that was done primarily to looking at modifications to the press box, the scoreboard, the sound, the use of asphalt walkways versus concrete. The budget had included refinishing or resurfacing the tennis courts, that will be done through our normal maintenance, and we also were able to reduce somewhat the seating capacity by 250 seats. This also allowed us to reduce the need for the number of plumbing fixtures that would be necessary because of the generally increased seating at the site. So we were able to get the budget down to $2.9 million for that particular project, which would include the use of artificial turf. And the artificial turf, again, gives us that opportunity to use that facility for a number of activities and different sport teams. We also had a discussion at the meeting that there may be a way that the district could use some of our reserve funds to help further defray the cost, and this is something that we may need to discuss later. It would be possible for the district to utilize some $400,000 of reserve funds so that the actual referendum could be reduced to $2.49 million. So those would be something that we can talk about later as we approach the referendum questions themselves. And that's probably what we did.
Any questions or comments from anybody? Thank you. Administrative reports, Ms. Brown, come on down.
Good evening, I just have a couple of things to share with you at this meeting. One of them is the seclusion and restraint form. The report that was found in your board docs, I just wanted to summarize a little bit that there were 10 students involved at the elementary school for the seclusion and restraint instances. Nine of the 10 students were receiving special education at the time. And at the middle school, there was one student involved in the seclusion instances, and that student received special education services. So as a matter of practice, we use nonviolent crisis intervention when intervening with students, and for all staff who have not been trained, or new staff that have been hired, we will be doing a full day in-service for them next Wednesday on the 22nd. And then we always have recertification in February for all of our staff who have been trained previously. The other thing I wanted to share with you is just this morning, we finished up our self-assessment from TPI, so they came and they did the Step Two verification, and what they did is from our 17 files that were chosen from previous in the year, they reviewed five files this morning, and from their review, just a couple of takeaways and then one correction that we will need to complete during the month of September. Any questions?
I have a question, do these reports go to the state, or are they just internal? Or does this data on restraint, yeah, does that need to be reported out?
It's just something that needs to be reported to the Board annually.
Okay.
And at this time, they're not taking that data, but not to say that they could have.
Do all staff receive or have the opportunity to take non-crisis, you know?
They do.
Problem intervention training?
Yep, and that's actually been in all the administrators' bulletins for them to know that this training is coming up.
And is it pretty universal or not? I mean, are most people take it or not?
Um.
What do you think?
I would say that primarily, like, all of our special education staff in Paris are definitely in that, and then, you know, the biggest thing is really the de-escalation techniques.
Yes.
And that is not something that you have to go through the whole training to receive, since we have a trainer on-site. Kathleen Crane is our district trainer, she is able to present that information to all staff, and that's something that I know especially Amanda and I have talked about quite in-depth in sharing that information with all of the elementary staff versus, you know, without having them to be, like, certified.
Good, good. The de-escalation part of it is absolutely outstanding.
Mm-hmm.
And if we can get that out to everybody in the form of in-service or whatever, I would encourage that.
That's something we can absolutely put on the plan for the year.
Yeah, I would think that that would be valuable in the, you know, with every student.
Yes. Yes.
Kids have good days and bad days.
Absolutely.
I just wanted, and I think they were really on the right track, because I actually added the 1617 report, so you could compare the two years. There's been a significant decrease in the amount of need for seclusion and restraint.
Yep.
And just, you know, for your knowledge too, anytime that any of those incidents happen, you have to fill out paperwork, so they, you know, anytime a student is in that situation, it's followed up by paperwork and looking through the process and make sure that everything was handled appropriately.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Vogel.
I did, you guys should have the goals from last year, and I updated them. Do you guys have any questions on those? Feel free to ask me now. You know, most of those, a couple of them do have their own little action plans that we, we look at effective student feedback with the grading, and some of the other student achievement items, so they'll continue as goals for this following year. I won't have, I probably will have those for you, our 1819 goals for the October meeting. So I work with my leadership team on kind of refining those, and let the staff have some input too before we come up with those. So any questions on those goals? The ACT stuff, I was told I can't talk about it, it's still embargoed, so that's in one of the goals as far as review, and I also have some information here, some highlights from that, but I can't talk about that.
Thanks.
Yeah, sorry. So no questions on the goals? Just a couple of things, a couple of thank-yous, thank you to Class 2018, if you drove in, if you saw the banners out there, are pretty cool, we've had a lot of compliments on those, so again, special thanks to the Class of 2018. I also want to give a special thanks to Ms. Renee Mitchell, one of our English teachers up here at the high school, she does credit recovery classes for summer school, and worked with 21, 22, something close to that number of students, and really went above and beyond making sure those kids passed those classes and did a tremendous job, and spent a lot of time outside of her normal hours, so again, special thanks to her. Some stats that I can talk about, some AP scores came in over the summer, advanced placement scores, good again, we'll start with AP Biology, we had 12 students, 50% of the 12 got three or better, for an average of 2.83. US History with Mr. Quinn, we had 30 students take the US History exam, and we had close to 71% get a three or better, and the average was 2.867. That's good, so just the numbers don't tell you are good. US Government, another Mr. Quinn class, he had 18 students take the exam, and 83% scored three or better, and that average was a 3.944, which is like, really good. And AP Calc with Ms. Denzine, 22 students took the exam, 81% passed, and that was a 3.864 average for AP Calc was, we had 11 fives, which is the highest you can get, and then also 10 fives in the US Government. We didn't have anyone take the AP Lit course, AP exam, because that's a dual-credit class, so by taking the class, they get transcribed credit anyways, so thus the need of not really to take the exam, so again, another great year as far as AP results. We also had tests in AP Spanish, AP Psych, and AP Calc BC, and those were all, five of those exams passed with a 4.4 average in those as well. That's all I have for you. Questions on those?
Questions?
AP classes, are there limits to how many students can sign up?
Nope.
So a given teacher can take an unlimited number of students?
As they can manage, right? We're not going to stick 40 in there in a class, but.
It sounds like they're getting increasingly.
In that case, we'd have two sections, but more than likely, we're not going to turn anyone down, we'll just add another section if need be.
That's a really good point, because at Lake Mills, if a student wants to take an AP class, they can. At many schools, you have to apply or have to be considered, and we have an open policy for.
Last two schools I was at, you needed to have certain data scores on your achievement test in order to take AP classes. Here, we don't, which I think is a good thing.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bauer.
Good evening, by the way, Cale stole my thunder, he asked me what I was going to say about my old goals, and then he used my words, so, but I'm in a better position than Amanda is to say, just like Cale, I also want to know if you have any questions regarding that. I did have a wonderful time going back through and reflecting, I think if you look at my notes, they start pretty short, but by the end, I'm just like, it was such a great year. So any questions regarding my goal reflections from this year? So that is really driving, we already started having conversations with the staff at the end of last year regarding our building goals for this year. Again, we will be releasing our goals in October, but they're very much in step, there's nothing that really is an outlier when you look at the goals that we had this year, it's just an expansion and some furthering of the understanding of how we're working with those things. So in addition to developing goals for this school year, registration has opened, and at the middle school, that opens a lot of doors for parents who may have concerns, or students who want to switch their schedules a little bit, so the office has been abarc with some of those types of things. I've been busily preparing for the first few days when staff returns, we have new format for open houses, or for the open house that we will be using, we're going to be, not to let the cat out of the bag, but we are going to be working on community again this year, and we are going to be doing our open house with just our core community teachers, so that would be their advisory group, so those parents go and see those teachers, really create a connection, parents see that teacher, know that that's the person they're going to be in contact with. The staff really said that that was important to them, so we're going to reframe our whole parent orientation night, so that people start connecting with our core community teachers. And then I am eagerly anticipating the return of students, it's, summer school has only been over for a couple of weeks, but it gets really quiet in a school most couple of weeks between summer school and the beginning of school, so we are just waiting for the kids to come back. Any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Questions, thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening, I just wanted to thank our custodians this evening for all of the work they've been doing around our school, it looks wonderful, walls have been painted, the floors are cleaned, most of the classrooms are ready for teachers to come back in, and the last few that still need to finish up will be done this week. I also want to thank Mrs. Erisin and Mr. Kiefer for coming together on the last couple of weeks to plan some playground stenciling for our outdoor play area. We wanted to add some color, but then also some organization for our students, so we have first grade and second grade, we have spots for them to line up, and then we also have bus lines that are kind of like circuits for them to tiptoe on and jump on logs and stepping stones, so it will serve the dual purpose of the bus lines as well as playground recess fun for our students. So I wanted to thank the two of them for coming up with that idea, and then also being outside in the 90-degree heat today, painting. Tomorrow, we leave for our PBIS training in the Dells, we have 11 staff members that will be coming together, and that will be the kickoff for our priorities for the school year, so we'll be having some work sessions along with the conference sessions that we'll be attending together, and those will then drive our goals around PBIS for the coming school year. And as Cale and Jen have already said, my school board goal reflection are included in your handouts for tonight. We have focused on the social and emotional development of our students, mathematics, English language arts, and then also the improvement of our special education delivery model. For next year, we're looking at implementing Ready Math for math, and then focusing on word study, words their way, and then our phonics instruction as our focus areas for next school year. Any questions?
Questions?
Are they going to, are you painting the squiggly line? Do you remember the squiggly line?
I do remember the squiggly line.
Yes, it was a follow the leader, it was a squiggly line, and it went all over the place, it was really neat.
We'll have to look into that, right now we have a snake that squiggles.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Brockert.
So the building principals reflected on their goals for the past year, so I took time to reflect on the different areas, the directors that I work with, and just give you some highlights as to what's been going on in the different areas. I have wonderful directors of transportation, food service, technology, facilities, maintenance, and I just really appreciate all their work and working well with me. So for example, in transportation, attached, I did give you the annual student bus rider handbook, which gets distributed to all our students. We are purchasing two vans, they're supposed to be picked up tomorrow, and then our transportation director's been setting up the bus routes, he's been working very hard, especially this last month. In food service, I was, I'm happy to report that we had a very successful 2017-18 year, it's worked out very well going back to self-operated program, and in 2018-19, we're working with several school districts across the state with that co-op for food vendors, so that's our big project moving forward. In technology, the technology department did a lot of work over the summer in replacing the middle school teacher machines are up for replacement, our library at the middle school, that computer lab, our high school and middle school tech ed classroom computer labs are up for replacement, we're in the cycle of every year, the fifth grade Chromebooks are purchased, so we did that, and then over the summer, we did get our second grade Chromebooks. We replaced computers for our building secretaries and some of the other directors, and with the help of E-Rate funding, we updated our wireless access points at the elementary school and the controller for the wireless system at the elementary school. And then again, with E-Rate funding, we replaced our UPSs at all three of our buildings, so as you can see, they've had a very busy summer. Again, our facilities and maintenance, I know the Board has seen the projects, because most of that runs through the 41 Fund or Capital Project Fund, but, I mean, we've been, we're doing blacktop maintenance, roof replacement, concrete work, tuck pointing, masonry work, and there still are some other projects we're trying to get done before the start of the school year, it's just been busy. And like Amanda said, we really appreciate the custodial work too, and trying to make sure the buildings are getting ready. And then in business services, again, it was truly a team effort, we had a very good financial audit, and that was completed already this summer, and, you know, working on getting all the reports for the DPI filed on time, so it's been a really good, healthy summer, and just happy of all of the things we were able to get done this summer and last year.
Any questions for Wendy? Okay. All right, Mrs. Strike.
Well, I just have a few things to mention to you, I'm sure that you've been hearing a lot about school safety, and we received our safety grant, the, some of the work that Ms. Brockert brought up is the, is already using those grant funds. We received the grants, the next day, we called all the vendors, things started, so a lot of that money is already being put to use, and those projects have begun. In addition, I have now, Megan Larabee and I attended a school safety training put on by the School Board Association, our big takeaway with that was increased communication during a crisis. Then the principals attended with the police, a work session about how to assess threat, and I think that we were probably very well-trained in that already, I think was kind of a takeaway, we kind of brought the team together to talk about how we assess threats or concerns that we have with certain students and how to do that. And then last week, I attended the Wisconsin Police Chiefs Association Conference in Green Bay, which is pretty interesting, because I'm used to going to education things where all the booths have toys and balls and books, and they had guns, and police cars and kinds of things, so that was an interesting conference for me to attend. And I thought it was just really impressive that the Police Chiefs Association devoted their whole summer conference to school safety. And we were able to meet with the people from Sandy Hook, one of the parents of one of the students, and she was actually the impetus for the $100 million grant for the state of Wisconsin, so it was really a great experience. So you are going to be hearing much more about our new security plans, Friday, a meeting with the admin team to actually put out the press releases and all the information about the security changes that we will be implementing for the beginning of the year. I've attached here's the social media report card, that's our update that we get about usage, and I think that when you're on our Facebook page, you'll see it's very healthy, it's a great way to communicate with parents, we're having a, consolidating to one website or one Facebook page has really helped us. Also attached are Ben Dayton's reports, report from the Recreation Department. One thing that I wanted to add is a group concerned, parents came to me in the fall, we put a lot of things in process, including hiring a consultant, one of the outcomes was we did a community-wide survey, that survey has been completed and the results compiled, I've reviewed them, and we're putting together some information for the community about what those results actually were. I think that we're doing some things really, really well, but of course, there's many things that we can work on, and we'll talk to you about those as you see fit. I think one thing is that people are really appreciating the new registration process for recreation, and we're looking to make some changes in facilities requests. One thing that I just want to add, because I hear this in the community, and I just want to make this clarification for anybody that might be listening, when people request facility usage, they are requesting that from the school district. Jane Radel works in the Recreation Department and in the Business Office, she's processing those facility requests as the school district employee, those are our facilities, not their recreation facilities. And I think maybe because she's in those dual roles, people are often confused about that, so if somebody puts in a facilities request and they don't get it, they think that the Recreation Department, you know, has something to do with that, but really, that the denial of a request is actually coming from the school district. And so we need to do better communication so people understand that, because there's a lot of concerns about how difficult it might be to request facilities. And I just wanted to start the conversation, that we have had a significant number of parents talk to us about providing before and after-school childcare through the Recreation Department, so we're going to be looking at that, we're going to be surveying parents, but I just wanted to let people know that we are very interested in providing that to meet the needs of our parents, and if we were to do that, we'd be looking for implementation of the fall of 2019. So we wanted to give the community a year heads-up that that might be something that's requested of us, and we're researching our ability to respond to the community.
Questions? Okay, let's move on to action items. Let's see if we can't take these three together, approval of the Regular Board of Education meeting minutes, July 9th, July 9th Finance Committee meeting, and the August 1st Facilities Committee proceedings, and if you have to abstain.
Do you have to abstain from it all, or?
Yeah, let's take them all together.
Okay, I move the Board approve the minutes of the July 9th, 2018 Regular Board of Education meeting, the July 9th Finance Committee meeting proceedings, and the August 1st, 2018 Facilities Committee proceedings.
Second? Moving to second to approve all of these minutes, the July 9th, August 1st. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
I can't do the finance one because I wasn't participating in it, so I guess abstain.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Abstain.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes three to two with two abstentions. All right, approval of vouchers and invoices.
I move the Board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,298,724.91 for the month of July 2018.
Second.
Moving to second to approve the vouchers and invoices. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Treasury's report.
I move the Board approve the Treasurer's report for the month of July 2018.
Second.
Moving to second to approve the Treasury's report. Any question? Roll call, please.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of resolution authorizing general obligation bond. bonds.
This amount before you is for 6.9 million, and that represents the addition at the high school, the addition of classrooms. Also, updates to the LMC where we are now, the adjacent restrooms in this hallway, family and consumer science classroom, weight room, technology, education, and agriculture classrooms.
So, I'll make the motion that be it resolved by the School Board of the Lake Mills Area School District, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to Chapter 67 of the Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $6,900,000 for the public purpose of paying the cost of construction of an academic addition, remodeling and improvements at the high school, and the acquisition of related furnishing, fixtures, and equipment.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Any comments?
So, this is the referendum question.
This is not.
This, this allows for the borrowing, which, which will.
If it is approved, if the referendum question.
Right, so this would be question number one.
Right.
Of the referendum.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of resolution authorizing general obligation bonds.
The second could become the second question of the referendum. And this is for the outdoor multipurpose facility located at the high school. It would include the reconstruction of the track area, including the creation of a multipurpose field within a new expanded track.
Okay, could we have a motion, please, and then we'll get it on the table and have a discussion.
Well, I'll move again, be it resolved by the School Board of the Lake Mills Area School District, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to Chapter 67 of the Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $2,900,000 for the public purpose of paying the cost of improvements to the existing outdoor athletic areas and construction and equipping of a multipurpose outdoor athletic facility at the high school.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to approve the borrowing of 2.9 million. Discussion. We have an option there. Dave?
Okay, I propose changing the motion in two ways. The first is that we are actually talking about a multi-use area and not an athletic area. So, I propose we change the terminology in the motion to reflect a multi, multi-use or multipurpose facility. And then, also, that we openly discuss the option we have available to us to reduce this to 2.49 million worth of borrowing.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? So, she's really, Rachel is really proposing two?
Mm-hmm.
Or an amendment to that?
Two amendments.
So, I, just to clarify, so, are you saying that you would like to see the last part of that motion, equip, equipping a multipurpose outdoor facility and remove the word athletic in that last?
As well as improvements to the existing outdoor.
But it is, it is just an athletic facility at this time.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So, it'd be changing it.
Okay.
From athletic to a multipurpose.
And yes.
So, should, do you want to start with that part and do a friendly amendment?
No, I'd like to vote, I'd like to make it cleaner and make a, actually vote on the first one. If that's, you know, I'd like more discussion.
Well, if we change it from 2.9 to 2.4, 2.4 or 2.5 is, Rachel suggested, how would we make up the difference?
Yes.
That was my question.
How would we?
Yeah. So, how are we making that modification?
The amount, the difference between 2.49 and 2.9 would be taken, we would contribute that from our cash reserve.
So, 500,000 or something?
Dave, did you have a question?
So, I think we're looking for on the record what that would mean. That would mean taking it from 25% down to 21% in our reserve. And we have a board statute that says that we can't go any lower, much lower than that.
Right, right. So, any other questions on that? All right, the original motion, let's, let's vote on the original motion, and we'll make it cleaner. And then, you can propose your new motion, if it goes down or up or wherever we go. So, the original motion was to borrow 2.9 million. Okay, so could we have roll call on that?
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Nay.
Robert D'Imperio.
No.
David Radel.
No.
Richard Mason.
Nay. So, that motion is defeated. The first motion. Second motion. Rachel, would you like to restate yours?
Sure, just the first part of that.
Make both changes, then.
Both changes in this one. Okay. I propose, I move that we change that motion, that we amend it as follows, that it is the amount not to exceed 2.4, or $2,490,000 for the public purpose of paying the cost of improvements to the existing outdoor athletic areas and construction and equipping of a multipurpose outdoor facility at the high school.
Megan, do you have that?
I do, yes.
Any discussion on that motion, new motion?
Give them a.
That would lower the obligation, just to make clear, that would lower the obligation for the taxpayers, and we would draw from our cash reserve the difference.
Right, and I think the point needs to be made that the cost of the project, the cost of the project and the borrowing are two different things. And the cost of the project is still 2.9 million. The borrowing is 2.49 million.
Rick, do you need a second on that motion?
Okay, we have a second on that motion?
Well, I'll second it.
Okay, moved in seconded. Okay, any other additional comments? Megan, do we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Okay, approval of resolution providing for referendum.
So, there's a, a structure of a resolution before you. That number, then, would be the 6.9 million plus the 2.49 million. So, the motion, the amount that needs to be in that blank that you'll see there in your template would now change to 9 million, 9.39 million.
Well, I'll move the board approve a resolution providing for a referendum election on the questions of the approval of initial resolutions, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $9,390,000.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded to approve the resolution, the borrowing resolution, for 9.39 million total. Questions?
So, it is clear, though, that we are going to be having two separate questions on the ballot. This is a statutory requirement to have this particular resolution which sums the two. Am I correct?
Sums the two and actually gives permission for a referendum election.
Okay.
Everybody's clearing that? Okay, roll call, please.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of employee handbook for the 18-19 school year.
At the last meeting, I gave you that really exhausted list of the, all of the changes and updates to the handbook. We've attached it again. Oh, I'm sorry. I have attached that report for you again. And so, this would be the second reading in time for you to vote on this resolution.
Can I have a motion, please?
I move the board approve the Lake Mills Area School District Employee Handbook for the 2018-19 school year with the updates as outlined.
Second.
Move in second to approve the 18-19 School District Employee Handbook. Questions? Comments? This is the second reading, so.
Right, and I thought we had a pretty good discussion at the last meeting regarding these issues.
Roll call, please.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously with two abstentions.
And please note in the minutes that they stepped out of.
Approval of elementary student handbook for the 18-19 school year.
So, this was shared with you last month, and this is just the final reading as well, so they can print this and get this ready for their students.
I move the board approve the Lake Mills Elementary School Student Handbook for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Move in second to approve the elementary handbook for this year, this coming year. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of middle school student handbook.
This was shared with you at last month as well, and I want to highlight once again that a significant change in this handbook is that student cell phones need to be turned off and stowed throughout the school day.
I move the board approve the Lake Mills Middle School Student Handbook for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Move in second to approve the middle school student handbook. Questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and it passes unanimously. Approval of policy updates.
As you recall, we presented all of these policy updates earlier. This is the second reading in time for approval. I just wanted to say, one thing that we still have not received enough information on yet is how we might move ahead with having Narcan in our schools. So, that is not included in a policy update at this time.
I move the board approve all policy changes and edits as presented at the June 11th, 2018 Regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Move in second to approve all the policy edits. Questions?
If I wasn't at the June meeting, do I abstain?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Abstain.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and we have one abstention and four yeses, so it passes four to one. So, approval of early graduation requests.
You'll see attached a request from an incoming senior with really wonderful reasons why he would like to graduate early.
I move the board approve the early graduation request as presented.
Second.
Move in second to approve an early graduation request. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff resignation.
I have three letters attached for support staff for you this evening.
I move the board approve the support staff resignations of Ms. Mary Jo Hornicle, elementary para educator, Tracy Hamilton, food service, and Cheryl Magnuson, food service, and thank them for their service to the students, families, and community of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Move in second to approve support staff resignations. Any questions on that? Same none. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignation.
Just have one middle school coaching position resignation for you this evening.
I move the board approve the co-curricular resignation of Mr. Sean Ballack as middle school cross-country coach, and thank him for his service to the students of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Move in second to approve a co-curricular resignation. Comments on that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff retirement.
You'll see before you a request for retirement for Mr. Dennis Riedel. As you know, he's been with us for 31 years as our Director of Facilities and.
Move the board approve the retirement for Mr. Dennis Riedel effective September 1st, 2018, and thank him for his 31 years of service to the students and families of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Move in second to approve the, he support staff retirement. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff letters of assignment.
So, we have already begun filling some of the positions that you just accepted, and they're listed here.
I move the board approve the following support staff letters of assignment and welcome them to the Lake Mills Area School District. Ms. Gina Royce, regular education para educator, Mr. Douglas Hueseth, bus driver, and a change in hours for Ms. Karen Glasser, regular education para educator, from 17.5 hours to 23.75 hours.
Second.
Move in second to approve staff letters of, of assignment. Questions on those? All right, roll call, please.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular letters of assignments.
As is typical at this time of year, we're filling our coaching ranks, and you can see there's quite a list there for you this evening.
I move the board approve the following co-curricular letters of assignment. Mr. Jeff Hegstrom, varsity girls soccer, Mr. Josh Vinlaw, JV boys soccer, Ms. Samantha Harrington, JV girls basketball, Mr. Dan Olson, assistant varsity football, Mr. Laurie Retrom, part-time assistant varsity football, Mr. Brad Rezeki, part-time assistant varsity football, and Mr. Ben Hale, middle school cross-country.
Second.
Move in second to approve co-curricular letters of assignment. Questions? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts.
We have two gifts this month.
I move the board accept the following donations and thank the donors for their generous support of our students. A $525 Panasonic camera donated to the high school athletic department from Brad and Kathy Rezeki, and a refrigerator donated to the recreation department from Terry and Pam Strike, estimated value $250.
Second.
Move in second to accept the gifts, the approval of the gifts. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Upcoming board agenda items. Anything that anybody has for next month or would like to see? Pam, anything?
Well, we'll have a facilities update. There'll be announcements about communication, about the referendum. Those will be pretty significant reports next month. We'll have some initial numbers of the number of students that we're enrolling at this time, probably a little bit of hiring.
Okay. All right, a motion to go to an executive session.
I'll move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically district administrator contract.
Second.
Move in second to approve the executive session motion. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
David Radel.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, that passes with unanimous approval, and we're into executive session. Aye, that passes with unanimous approval, and we're into executive session.